The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order if you would please rise as you are able and give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with thanks in our hearts. Lord, we ask that you cover our city, Lord, for we have families, the Dominique White family, that are out there that are hurting. We have our officers that are hurting. We have a bunch of people that are hurting, and, Lord, we ask that you just come and just protect us and heal us and give us guidance. And, Lord, we ask a special blessing on our city, Lord. I ask a special blessing on each and every council member, our new city manager, and his family as they have come to town. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless us with jobs and people. And, Lord, we ask a special blessing on all of our young people. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations this evening. We do have some presentations, so if the city manager would introduce, please.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Our first presentation will be done Nikki Lee.
Good evening, members of the governing body. I'm very excited that this many people get to hear the quarterly financial report tonight. Luckily, it's positive news all around, so they can all share this news around the city. So this is, of course, our quarterly tradition of reporting, the report that we've sent all to you all. You all have it in front of you, and for everybody in the audience, it's available online on the city's website. And as always, we give an overall view of how our revenues are doing across the city. The snapshot in front of you is all funds combined, so this is general fund, utilities, every fund that the city budgeted. And overall, we are 8% over revenues from this point last year, so that's a very good number that we track. And some of the revenue highlights, just these are the largest revenue sources, at least in the general fund, that we track to make sure that we are coming in where we believe. Property tax is 3% over this point last year. Sales tax is 1.64% over this point last year, so we are seeing some growth there, which we expected. And then franchise fees, which, of course, is the revenues that we receive from the utilities, is up 0.2% over last year. The expenditure highlight, page four, we track our expenditures, again, all funds combined here, separated by fund type, into different categories, so you can see personnel, contractuals, commodities, other payments, and capital outlay. And the biggest takeaway there is that personnel is up 3%, which is about exactly where we budgeted. Contractuals are up 14%. Most of that is due to the timing. That's really a catch-all category, where there's a lot of different payments and types of services that hit that account. Commodities are down 12% and capital projects are down 17%. And again, most of that is just due to the timing of how we're booking and using some of those expenses. Again, there's your expenditure highlights, and again, there is a lot more detail than what you see up here in the report online. The general fund balance, this is something that we would like to update you on every quarter, is whether we think that we're projecting to see any change in our overall fund balance. And at this point, we are expecting to come in right about the same level as last year, which is meeting our fund balance goal of over 20%. And then just a couple of our major funds. In the water fund, fees are up 2.3%, and that, of course, is mostly due to the rate increase that we had. This is the last year for that. Expenditures are slightly lower than last year, and with all the utilities, you'll hear the same story, that that is a planned reduction of expenses, mostly because the future of the rates and the revenues in this fund is unknown and yet to be decided after last year. But we are projecting to maintain our overall fund balance. In the stormwater fund, we're up 0.3% in revenue over last year, which makes sense because we didn't have any rate adjustments in the stormwater fund. And again, we're expecting to maintain our fund balance. And in the wastewater fund, revenues are up 5.4%. Same story as on the water fund. That's mostly due to the rate increase, and we are being very conservative on the expenditures due to the future of the fund rates. And then finally, in our risk funds, this is capturing all of our risks, that would include the health fund, our insurance funds, and a couple of others. This is a good news story here. We are expecting to add to our balance, which we would want to see in the risk funds, and we believe that these are all trending right on where we would want them to be at this point. And then, as always, just a prompt that you can go online and see not only our full quarterly financial report, but we have updated data, our budget website, our expenditure portal, our performance portal, and our capital project portal. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much. We have another report.
Yes, and Bill Fander will cover our planning quarterly report.
Well, good evening. Thank you, governing body. This is a new tradition that we'd like to start. We have an old tradition, new tradition, is our first-ever planning quarterly reports, and it's something we started, actually internally, about a few months ago, just doing an update on development trends and permit trends. So we produce a development and growth management report. We send this out monthly. You should have a copy, actually, of the quarterly report in front of you, as well as a summary of that, which I'll go over in the presentation. But this is, as I said, brand-new. I will go over a little bit more than I might normally, just so there's a lot of information. Please let me know if I can help explain anything as we go along. Starting out with total permits for the city, we are projecting to be a little bit under what we did last year, 465 permits by the end of the year is our projection, which is a little bit 6% less than last year. Generally, we're in the ballpark for what we've been doing the last five years or so. If you dig a little deeper, though, you'll notice that red line on the chart, that is our commercial permits. Those have been going, actually, much more robust the last year or two. Commercial permits are commercial buildings, as well as any multiple-family institution, schools, so basically anything that's not a single-family or two-family residence. We've seen an increase of 12% in those permits since last year and almost 19% over our five-year average. So we are seeing quite a bit of growth in that sector, probably the most we've had since the recession. Digging a little more deep, we measure our permit activity, but what is the scale of that activity? So we look at the square footage as well as the value. Square footage for our permits are up quite a bit this year, and you can see it's been increasing over the last five years. So we're at 95% increase over the last five years, and it continues to grow. If you look at the value of the permits, that also has been growing since 2010. It's plateaued a little bit here this past year. We're just down a hair, about 3%, from last year in our values, but overall, in the last five years, we're up 27% in our building permit values. So what's that say? It says that we're seeing more, not only more value, more investment coming in through the building permit cycle, but we're seeing larger footprints as well, larger renovations as well. Okay, transitioning over to residential growth on page five there. This projects the number of new housing units that we have happening in the city, and we're right in line with what's been happening in the last five years. Last year, we're a hair under last year, but we're above our five-year average, so we're looking at about 121 units this year by the end of the year. Then we also look at a few key indicators to see if our land use and growth management plan policies that we enacted two years ago are having anticipated effect. This shows of all the units, new units in the county, what is the city's share? We would expect this kind of to grow over the next few years, and it has since last year by 6% and slightly over our five-year average. So by the end of this year, we're projecting almost 49% of all new units in the county would be happening in the city. That's a little bit of an increase since 2015, when we enacted those policies. And then this shows our three-mile area, the same thing. What's our share within the three-mile area on page seven there? There's really no change since last year, but there is an increase of share in the city of new housing units by about 4% since 2015. So these are going in the right direction, what we would think. Lastly, this is, I'll try to break this down, if you probably pay attention more to the left-hand side of this, of those bullets there. We measure the inventory that we have of vacant lots in the city, and not just any vacant lots, just, we call prime vacant lots. These are lots that have been platted since 1970. So these are the ones that are most likely to be built upon as we grow. We were at about 1,100 lots that are vacant, that are prime vacant lots. This would equate to about 11 to 12 years' worth of housing growth for that sector. So we would expect this inventory to go down and be absorbed into the community, more lots to be built on, before we begin to plan for new growth areas. Couple other elements of the reports. We have a map in the report that kind of shows you the distribution of where the permits are this year, red for commercial, blue for residential. We also star those areas, our top 10 by valuation, which shows up on the report as well, just to kind of give you an idea, what are the significant developments happening that we're processing in our development services section. So Cyrus Hotel at the top of that list for this year. So that kind of wraps up the summary of our first quarterly report. This can also be found by the public on our website, topeka.org, on the planning page. Just look under Resources, and you'll see the DGM report, and we have all of those archived. So if we can do anything better, just please let us know. If you have any questions, I can answer.
Okay. Are there questions for Phil and his report? Councilwoman Claire.
On the development and growth management report, you said you expected this to grow. Why do you expect that to grow?
Councilwoman Claire expects the report to grow.
You just said, "We expect this to grow," that there would be more city share, new dwelling units in the county.
Sure. I think I was referring to the share of the units that are occurring in the city compared to the county as a whole. That should grow because there are probably going to be more, we are encouraging more development within the city boundaries and less lots are being created outside the city through our new subdivision rules. So anything that's being platted is probably going to either be fewer lots outside the city, or we're going to, we see a lot more people taking advantage of vacant lots inside the city or repurposing buildings inside the city than we had in the past. So that's why we kind of expect that to grow.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Define parent permit.
Permit?
Define that.
Councilwoman Ortiz, a permit is a...
A parent permit.
A parent's permit.
Like on the Cyrus Hotel, Federal Home Loan Bank.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Top 10 permits, yes. A parent permit would be, there's parent and child permits. Parent permit is the overall permit for the building itself, but underneath that, you have different trades. You might have a footing and foundation permit. You may have the fire permit. You may have the electrical permit. You may have plumbing. So you have different child permits underneath that. So the parent permit is the final permit that gets issued.
So that's like the overall...
That's the overall.
Okay. You could have just put overall instead of parent. Come on, Bill.
Either way. Any other questions? All right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your report. It's interesting. Welcome. Good new information. Completes the presentations, we'll go to the roll call.
Mayor Wegas.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Delaissla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
Councilman Harmon is ill this evening and cannot be here. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda, and there will be no executive sessions, so we will proceed with the appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Shay Downing to the Topeka Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to fill a term ending January 1, 2022. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Frank Burnham to the Topeka Public Building Commission for a term ending November 15, 2021.
Those are the appointments, and your pleasure. Deputy Mayor Cohen moves to approve. Councilwoman Schwartz seconds. No discussion. All those in favor, vote yes.
We have eight, yes.
Eight having voted yes, the appointments are approved. And I would like to introduce Frank Burnham, if you would stand. Frank is the new appointee from the state on the Topeka Public Building Commission. This is the commission that oversees, it's a state statute-created, but it oversees buildings in the city of Topeka that the state is involved in, such as the KBI building on the Warsburg Campus, the Curtis Building downtown, and all of those. And on this commission, the public schools, the state, and the county all have appointments that they recommend, and Mr. Burnham is a recommendation of the Secretary of Administration, and welcome. Glad to have you here, glad to have your service. Appreciate it. We proceed with consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by city manager Brent Trout naming banks and saving institutions that are designated as depositories for all city of Topeka accounts and authorizing signatories and rescinding city of Topeka Resolution Number 8849. B is a resolution introduced by city manager Brent Trout concerning the city of Topeka's participation in the state of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool and rescinding city of Topeka Resolution Number 8850. C is approval of proposed settlement agreement and release of all partial potential claims, including EEOC charge number 563-2017-01687 for payment of $25,000. D are minutes of the regular meeting of October 17, 2017, and special meeting of November 6, 2017, and there are no applications.
That is the consent agenda, and your pleasure. Councilwoman Delaissla moves to approve. Councilman Jensen seconds. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine, yes.
Nine having voted yes, consent agenda is approved, it's red. We go to the action items. First is a resolution, recommendation of the planning commission.
A is a resolution introduced by city manager Brent Trout in accordance with Section 1860-010 of the Topeka Municipal Code, amending a conditional use permit, SP 62, that allowed specifically for the sales of orthopedic appliances to allow retail sales that is subordinate and in association with the principal use of the office building on property located at 1119 Southwest 10th Avenue and presently zoned O&amp;I II Office and Institutional District, all being within the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. City Manager.
The report is there, and the time is on the commission.
Okay. Are there questions on this? This is a planning commission recommendation. If we have any more, if Mr. Fander wants to provide additional background.
Real briefly, Doorstep is, as many of you know, is a social service agency that helps, provides emergency assistance to families in crisis and poverty. They have an office at 10th and Buchanan, and they want to move their longstanding retail thrift shop called Dovetail from 12th and Lane to the office building here. So they need to amend their conditional use permit on the property to allow retail as a subordinate use. This is a good thing, not only for them, it makes their operations more efficient. We don't have to rezon the property along 10th, which is all planned for office and institutional-type uses, so that's a good thing. The only issue that really came up was a donation of goods, so there's a condition on the CUP that they cannot leave them outside longer than a day. That doesn't normally happen anyway, but it is a protection the neighborhood did bring up. So we recommend approval, as well as the planning commission.
Okay. Are there any questions on the resolution? And what we have done with ex parte is if anyone has been contacted that they want to, because we have to, we are the judicial body approving the planning commission's recommendation. If anyone has been involved in conversation, then we ask them to state that before the group, if anyone wishes to do so. Seeing none, we have a motion. Yeah, Councilman Ortiz.
I have been contacted by email and phone calls.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Hiller.
Well, with that, and I've not, but I wanted to compliment planning, as well as Doorstep. It moved through, I represent this district, and it's in my neighborhood, and it's gone just fine, as far as I know, and I would move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a motion?
No.
I'm sorry. Since it's in your district, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Councilwoman moves to approve, and Councilman Jensen seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes.
We have nine, yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Item B, an ordinance, and also a recommendation of the planning commission.
B is an ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinance by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 2655 Southwest Wanamaker Road from I-O&amp;I I, Office and Institutional District to C II Commercial District.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes. It has been reviewed by planning and zoning, and is recommended for approval, and I asked Mr. Fander to come forward and make comments, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This rezoning, located at 26th and Wanamaker, is a rezoning from O&amp;I I to C II for two main reasons. The owner wants to enlarge the building. O&amp;I I does not allow the square footage he is seeking, also to have a larger sign, a freestanding sign on the property. The request is in keeping with, actually, the corridor for Wanamaker to go to C II. So we do support it. Planning commission does support it. I will point out, this is not necessarily an ideal reason to rezon, just to have a larger sign. It points out to some of the deficiencies in our sign code, which we are aggressively taking on as a comprehensive update. We're in the beginning stages of that. So we think in the future, hopefully, that something like this wouldn't be necessary. We'll have more, probably proportionality, to the size of the building and the lot to allow larger signs like this. But, that being said, it is in keeping with the corridor character, and we do support the rezoning to C II.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Fander on this particular matter? Does anyone have ex parte communication that they need to address? Seeing it is in, Mr. Deputy Mayor's, your district.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You move. Councilwoman Claire seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine, yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Go to item C, an ordinance, recommendation of the planning commission.
C is an ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 5127 Southwest Wanamaker Road from RR I Residential Reserve District and C II Commercial District, all to R I Single Family Dwelling District.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, the planning commission has approved, and I'll ask Mr. Fander to come forward and explain.
Thank you. Once again, the last zoning on this, for this item, is at 53rd and Southwest Wanamaker. The current use is a single-family home with some ag use. The proposed use is a single-family home with some ag use, but it would be, the proposal would be demolishing the current home and keeping the rest of it in for pasture, for livestock. The current zoning does not allow for a new house to be built, which is why this zoning has to be downzoned to, whoops, to RR, to R I. This was zone C II back in 2008 in anticipation of a potential big-box retailer that never materialized. It was probably a little premature to, because our services and infrastructure are not all out there yet. But we do, so we do support the proposed zoning, meeting our land use and growth management plan. I will also note that the residents of the area were, not only were they thrilled for this rezoning to come forth, but they complimented the city on the process that was put in place to have neighborhood meetings before the planning commission meets. They would have loved to have had that back in the day, so they just wanted to send along their compliments to the change in the process. So I will stand for any questions. We do recommend approval.
Are there questions on this change? Seeing none, thank you. Are there any members who want to describe communications, proponents or opponents? Seeing none, we have a, this is in council district. Councilwoman Schwartz.
I'll move to approve.
Moves to approve, and Councilman Jensen seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine, yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. We go to item D, a labor agreement.
D is approval of a three-year labor agreement between the city of Topeka and local 1294 Missouri Kansas State Council 61, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I'll ask Human Resources Director Russell to come forward and explain the contract, please.
Russell.
Good evening, governing body. Before you this evening is a tentative agreement that we've reached with the ASME Development Services Labor Union for a three-year labor agreement. This agreement is retroactive to January 1, 2017. The agreement includes updates to the discipline section of the contract to be clear with current changes in state law. The recall provision, clarification to reference group healthcare is handled by a separate agreement, and provides clarification of mandatory and voluntary certifications. And it does include wages across the board for 2017 of an increase of 1.75% and 2% for 2018. We will reopen and discuss wages for 2019 based on the comparability study that was conducted this year by the Austin Peters Group. I would be happy to stand for any questions and recommend approval otherwise.
Are there questions? Discussion? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Your pleasure. Councilman Jensen moves to approve. Councilwoman Delaissla, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes.
We have nine, yes.
Nine having voted yes, the labor agreement is approved. Go to item E, to set a public hearing date.
E is authorizing a public hearing for December 5, 2017, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amendments to the 2017 and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amendments to the 2017 operating budget.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I request that Budget and Performance Manager Nick Hawkins come forward and present.
Good evening, members of the governing body. This is a procedural step to set up the public hearing for December 5th for the 2017 budget amendments that are required by state law whenever we have planned expenditures over our adopted appropriations. This year, we have three funds that are on the list. That is the citywide half-cent sales tax fund for streets, transient guest tax fund, and the tax increment financing fund. And in the case of all three of these, we have revenues that will, our fund balances that will cover the additional expenditures in these funds, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, and we're just, we're here, we're setting a hearing date for December the 5th, that which action will be taken then on those, and people sort of could speak to those at that time. Deputy Mayor Cohen?
I'm at the booth.
Okay, moves to approve. Councilman Claire seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the public hearing date is set. Go to item F, a public hearing and ordinance.
F is a public hearing and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout adopting a redevelopment project plan for the Wheatfield Village Redevelopment District pursuant to KSA 121770 S.C., as amended.
Thank you. And for this particular item, just to show the steps that we're going to go through, first, the city will give an overview, as we usually do, then we ask the developer to speak on the issue, then we'll have public comment, and then following public comment will be the motion, action would be taken at that time, so that we have the benefit of hearing from the, from the public in the public comment. So with that, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a very big item that's been worked on for quite a while by many people before me, so, but I will make a presentation basically to summarize some of the basic points that relate to this development agreement. After that, Deputy Manager Gerber will cover various agenda items and how they'll be handled, and the importance of each. The governing body is being asked to approve a development agreement tonight between the City of Topeka and 29th and Fairlon LLC for a project that is proposed will include the development of property generally located along Fairlon Road and Southwest 29th Street. There currently is a building that is there in disrepair, but most of the property is vacant. The agreement calls for the use of a new tax increment financing district, or TIF for short. The TIF district was established on June 26, 2017. The boundaries of the Community Improvement District, or CID for short, will be formally established by item 6H, if approved by the governing body. Each of these actions by the City of Topeka will provide authorization for incentives to developer, to the developer to assist in completion of the project. The developer has agreed to construct the following project components: a multi-story 150 to 180-unit upscale market-rate apartment complex wrapped around a parking garage; a seven-to-nine-screen state-of-the-art movie theater with bar and food service; a multi-story 70 to 90-room hotel with a national flag; a family dining restaurant located in the southeast corner of the site; a fast-food restaurant building with two tenants, including one operating a drive-through window at the east end of the site. There will also be an open space at the southeast corner of the site, and as well, they'll complete the land acquisition, site preparation, and horizontal improvements required to support the project. As part of that, as we look at those tenants, the developer shall provide a notice to all proposed, of all proposed tenants and third-party operations of any project components to the city through the city manager 10 days prior to the execution of a lease agreement for the same. The city manager may have the opportunity to provide his objection to such a tenant. If objected to the item, the item will appear before the governing party to discuss objection and reach an agreement. The development project is estimated to cost approximately $93 million to develop. The developer has agreed to spend a minimum of $40 million on the project costs. The City of Topeka is not issuing bonds for this project, loaning money, or providing upfront grants to the developer of this project. The incentives for Wheatfield Village project are provided in the form of the reimbursement of monies collected from the CID and TIF districts. We are pledging to provide a reimbursement of the sales tax and property tax generated by the developer's project back to the developer after the completion, although, of each component. Although the developer is not required to complete the entire project, it must spend a minimum of $40 million worth of project costs on the project on and before the placed-in-service date according to the default language in the agreement. Road and intersection improvements will be made at the intersection of Southwest 29th Street and Fairlon Road. The half-cent sales tax funds will be used to pay for the allowable improvements. The maximum cost for the developer is capped at $1,112,483. The terms of the development agreement and other agenda items presented tonight represent the best language the city staff could negotiate with the developer. The developer is agreeable to the terms as presented. I recommend to the governing body to approve the development agreement, which is part of the Wheatfield Village Community Improvement District as required by the city's CID policy. Mr. Doug?
Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Governing body, good evening. We thought it would be helpful to just walk through the items associated with this and the various components of each, so that there was an understanding that these are related, but separate and distinct items, which will require three separate votes from the body. You've obviously had multiple presentations from staff and the development team on all of these issues, so don't need to go into that history, but just wanted to walk through each item individually and let you know what they incorporated and what you would be voting on for each item. The first is action item 6F, which we're actually on right now, and that consists of two parts, really. As the mayor noted, there is a public hearing. We continue that public hearing, we began it in September, on the 12th of September, continued it to October 3rd, and then we continued again to this evening. So that will be a component of that action tonight, is to open the public hearing and hear public comment. This is action item, in a very technical sense, will adopt the project plan. So these agenda items are on the agenda in this order for a reason. Basically, you start at the top with sort of a big-picture overview, this is the project plan, these are the details, or these aren't the details, this is just the project plan, what we intend to have happen. And then it goes, the next item goes to the mechanics of the zoning, and then finally it gets into the weeds with all of the terms and everything that's contained into the development agreement. So you start with a high-level concept, and then you move down into the development agreement. So, action 6X, 6F, as noted, will have a public hearing, developer comments, and I would note for each of you that this does require by statute a two-thirds vote to approve this. So doing the math, that's seven votes in the body to approve the project plan. As we move on to item 6G, that is the ordinance that amends the district map and basically changes zoning for the property from C-4, which it is right now, C-4 Commercial, to a PUD, Planned Unit Development. And each of you are familiar with what PUDs, what's incorporated into those. We will have an overview from Mr. Finder, and he will talk through what happened at the planning commission, and the various aspects that went into the PUD for this particular development. And as happened on the first three agenda items this evening, you'll be asked to make any ex parte representations that might have occurred related to this project. And then finally, the action item 6H will be an ordinance establishing the CID, as noted by the city manager, imposing a 2% CID, 2% retailer sales tax. And then, as required by our city policy, we have a CID policy, which is relatively newly adopted, and that policy requires a development agreement. And so, the ordinance that establishes the CID also by reference, by incorporation, approves the development agreement. So with the action on, the action you take on item 6H, if you approve, you will be approving not only the CID and that tax, but also the development agreement by incorporation. Very brief run-through overview of what these next three items consist of, and unless you have any questions from me, I would like to...
Are there questions at this point? Councilman Hiller?
Quick clarification, even though the development agreement, and I, you did a good job at explaining kind of sets and subsets, even though the development agreement is subsidiary to the CID, it also addresses the conditions on the TIF. Correct?
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Hiller, that's correct. It just, in a lot of develop, a lot of developments like this across other cities, you would have a development agreement with the TIF and approve it as part of that project plan. But our policy specifically requires that it be approved in association with the CID.
So it will still apply to both, that's just where we're approving it?
Still applies to both.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions? All right, then we'll have the opportunity for the developer to make a presentation.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Bob Johnson. I'm appearing on behalf of Jim Klosman, developer and principal, 29 Fairlon LLC. Also here tonight, Jennifer Sork, general counsel for the developer, 29 Fairlon LLC, and some other members of our team as well. Schwert Design Group, Cook Flat Schrobel Engineers, Drake Development, and traffic consultant Trans Systems are all here, all of whom would be happy to answer any questions that might fall within their area of expertise. We want to start by saying we appreciate the thorough and time-consuming public process that we've been through here. Each of you has committed a lot of time and effort and energy to this project, and we think the project is better because of it. It was roughly a year, almost to the day that we came before you for the first time to start this process. We're very excited to be here today, finally, at this point. We also want to thank the staff for their tireless dedication to this project. It was a very constructive process working with them, and to arrive at a framework we can all move forward underneath, and we're thankful for all of their tireless, hard work and effort and energy here as well. As I said, we're excited to be here tonight, finally, to seek your approval to move forward with this very important public-private partnership. We do not intend to rehash all of the presentations we've made in this public forum to date. As Doug referenced, there have been many, but we do want to reiterate what our ask is here tonight, and that's to move forward with a transformative project for the city on a pay-as-you-go basis for certain statutorily eligible costs to be reimbursed through incentive proceeds. Let me give some parameters again to what that means here. First of all, I want to speak to why this is such a transformative project, and why it's a first-of-its-kind project to Topeka. As you know, this is really the first mixed-use project of this scale and of this level of investment in this city. It's also unique because, as City Manager mentioned, there is no bond risk being requested of the city to be part of the financing package here. It is, as I said, a pay-as-you-go incentive project, which means if the project generates tax increment on top of what was there when the TIF district was created, that increment can be utilized to reimburse statutorily eligible costs. If there's no increment generated, or there's less than what we project, the city is not obligated to reimburse the developer for anything. It's only that increment generated solely by this project that would be utilized to reimburse statutorily eligible costs. Again, that also means that there was a tax base set when the TIF district was created, and those taxes that were there in existence when the TIF district was created will not be utilized in this project. Those will continue to flow to the taxing jurisdictions. If we're offered the opportunity here to move forward with this project, the project will create significant investment in the city, it'll create jobs in the city, it will create a large amount of transient guest tax directly for the city, it will also prevent sales leakage and sales tax leakage to other communities. Further, we believe this project will lead to further economic investment and development in this city past this project. We think it'll be a spur, a frontier for future projects in this city if we're afforded the opportunity to move forward. So again, we want to thank you for an open and thorough and constructive process here. It's resulted in a better project, and we hope you have your approval to move forward. At this point, I'd like to invite Jim Klosman up to make some remarks as well.
Thank you. Mayor and council, thanks again. It's been a long process, as Bob said. Started about a year ago, actually started a lot longer than that ago, when we first bought the property about three or four years ago. We've been working on this for quite some time. We didn't want to bring a pie-in-the-sky project to you without tenants, without any formulation in terms of what this would be. So we really went out and went through several versions of this before we came on the final version that we thought was the best for Topeka and the best to really move us forward. And it took a while, but we feel like we brought an outstanding project together for you, one that frankly, what I told you before, we need your help on. This is one that's a much larger project than we would normally do on our own. We could have done a much smaller project that would really have not much of an impact on Topeka, but still would have been profitable for us, but we're really reaching out to do something that we think can be transformative. There will be an asset to Topeka for many generations down the road. So again, I appreciate the time, the city's worked with us very well, we appreciate what they've done. We appreciate being a member of the Topeka community and being able to bring this to you, and I stand for any questions.
Are there questions? Questions that any have for Mr. Klosman or Mr. Johnson, whoever. Councilman Hiller, do you want to go first?
Oh, all right. I have two.
Sure.
They're friendly questions, but...
I hope so.
We've had a lot of input from the public and the staff as well, and with this, and you've known all along, I think this concept is exciting, but it's the package that makes it, that gives it that edge, that to me, makes it eligible for the TIF financing especially, as well as the CID. So there have been concerns stated, both from the staff and the public, that there are not specific timeframes in the development agreement. And then, as the, I think the City Manager mentioned, not specific language about completing it, yet that's really important to all of us. Could you talk to us about what timeframe you expect this, today, you expect this project to follow?
Sure. We expect, if we're approved tonight, and we understand that the council has to prove that, that we'll start demoing the property fairly quickly. We've already gone in to find out what asbestos is in the property and what needs to be remediated. So we're ready fairly quickly to start on the project, to hopefully get the new city manager and the mayor, and the new mayor out there to help us break ground here pretty quickly. So once that starts, we would, we would expect that probably, we've got the winter, couple months, then in the spring, we'll start construction on the first phases, which would be the restaurant, both restaurants, would be the hotel, and would be the theater. Those pieces would be in place, hopefully, within the next 18 months after construction. It takes around a year to 18 months to construct. And then the apartments, which take longer to go ahead and put all the architectural parts together, would be the next part of the project that would occur right after that. So I would think within the next year and a half to two years, the bulk of the project will be open. We have to go $40 million before we're able to withdraw any money to pay for this, so really, it's to our benefit to try to get this done and to get it going and to get it finished. And you're right, this is a total project, it's one that we're vitally committed to, as we are to any place in Topeka. We've done a lot of projects in Topeka, and every one of them, we feel, has been a very good-quality project. This will be an excellent-quality project.
Thank you. I had a second question, yes.
Second question.
And there have been concerns expressed as well from the staff and the public about whether the new businesses would simply take residents or guests or customers away from existing businesses, be that, you know, restaurant, hotel, apartments. So could you please address, by category, if you would...
Sure.
...how these four proposed types of businesses will add to the business sector in Topeka?
Sure. Again, this is a unique product, it's one that's multi-use in one area, so that it's the restaurants, it's the coffee shop, it's the theater, and it's the apartments, all integrated together. So we actually feel that that will pull in more people from outside of Topeka to come to Topeka, instead of going to Lawrence to stay in Topeka. We own restaurants in Topeka right now, so if we thought this was hurting us, we wouldn't be doing this. We don't expect this is going to take away from our other restaurants. We own other coffee shops in Topeka, so we don't expect those to, we expect this to really add to Topeka and add to the ability for more people to enjoy what we have right there. The theater itself, you know, is going to be an additional theater, but for a city this size would normally have more than one theater anyway. And to just say one theater in town, we feel like there's, competition is good for everybody. Again, we feel like this whole project really enforces the ability to bring in outside the... And to just say one theater in town, we feel like there's, competition is good for everybody. Again, we feel like this whole project really enforces the ability to bring in outside dollars as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Claire?
Okay, a couple things, a couple questions.
Sure.
How, okay, so I noticed it says restaurants, two restaurant buildings anticipated to contain. How secured are you in the businesses that you say will be there? So the theater, the Marriott, have they actually confirmed that, yes, we will?
We're pretty certain they've said yes. I just got the franchise agreement today for actually an upgraded hotel from the one we're looking at before. Can I say that or not? I'm not sure.
Too late.
Yeah. It's Spring Hill Suites is what we're working on right now, which is actually higher than actually the Town Place Suites. So yes, we're working with the people. Again, we didn't want to bring a pie-in-the-sky product to you. We've had numerous discussions. We have letters of intent. We have people that are on the line. I think they came and spoke to you before, many of those people did, the theater people did, actually the people that own the theater. We've known them for some time, and they're, they keep emailing me every week saying, "When can we get this started?" So these are all real projects. They're not something that we just kind of imagined.
Well, but it's not a Marriott, which is listed here.
No, it is a Marriott, yeah.
It is a Marriott?
Spring Hill Suites is a Marriott.
Okay. And then the Spin Pizza and Johnny's Tavern and PT's Coffee, so they've all said yes.
Well, on Spin Pizza, we own part of that, so we're franchisee of Spin Pizza with Brent Bowles and Greg Schwert in town, so we're pretty confident we can get them in there.
Confident? Bet you're not. But you don't have anything-
I can't guarantee they'll vote with me, but I'm pretty certain that they will. But yes, they're, I think we're all really looking at that. The Johnny's folks who are in here, they've been to our office, they've been before you, they're super excited about becoming part of the-
Well, and that's okay, everyone excited, but have they written it down and said, "Yes, we will"?
Oh, absolutely. On a letter of intent, we don't have the lease done yet because we don't have anything in place yet. As soon as this is done, we will move to leases fairly quickly.
Okay. And then how do you, how do you feel since Ramada just closed, citing, you know-
Different products, entirely different products. I think that, and let me give you an example. We do, our primary business is senior living, and we do nursing facilities, we do assisted living facilities, we do a lot of projects that are on the senior care side. And when we're looking at hotels, or if we're looking at nursing facilities or assisted living facilities, you have facilities that may be 30, 40 years old that the occupancy is not very good on because people just don't want to be there. So they have failed. In that case with the Ramada Inn, it was a very, very old product. We don't think it was well-managed particularly. So we're not thinking that we're taking away from an existing hotel there. We're not really competing with the Ramada Inn. We're competing with a much higher level that will pull people to Topeka to keep them here rather than going to Lawrence or Kansas City to stay. So again, I don't think that's really a comparative. We've closed old nursing homes before because they're not competitive. You have to bring a product that people want to buy and want to stay in. We think that's exactly what we're doing with this product here.
And one more. What are you going to do if, what was the first phase, the restaurant?
Two restaurants, the theater and the hotel.
So that's the very first phase, all that's going to get them?
Yeah.
What are you going to do if those, if the public doesn't respond like you think? And, oops, we have no money, you can't move forward. Are you going to sell it? You going to let it? I mean, what would you do?
Well, we very seldom sell anything, but I'll give you another example, the Blue Moose, which we own, and we partnered with Casey Hopps out of Kansas City. And when that restaurant failed as the Brick Oven, we were planning on doing something with that building. We wanted that building to remain a restaurant. One of the uses was a dental office, and we thought that was just not a great use for that building. So our partners, Casey Hopps, we're partners with those, with that group, we said, "We want to bring a Blue Moose to Topeka," and they said, "No, nobody's going to come there." I mean, they just won't support a Blue Moose. We said, "Look, we think, we live in Topeka, we know Topeka, we think we know what people will support." We talked them into coming to Topeka as a Blue Moose. Out of all their Blue Mooses in Kansas City and elsewhere, this is the highest grossing Blue Moose of any of them. If you build the right product and people like what you have, I firmly believe they will show up. We're not contingent on this project supporting what we're going to do. We've, we're a fairly large organization. We have 60 facilities in five states, and so this is not something that we can say this is going to either cause us to be successful or not successful. We're making a concerted effort to invest in Topeka. We've invested in a lot of other communities as well, but we would just soon stay here in town and be able to come over and have a Spin Pizza or have a drink at Johnny's.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you very much for your comments. We will then go to, first, we will, we will open a public hearing that's continued to tonight, so we're in the public hearing process. We have six people who have signed to speak. First is Kelly Dugan.
She is ill this evening.
All right. Second, we have Connor England. And if you would, to be followed by Bob Ross. If you're in the seated, that you could move out so that we can move through it reasonably rapidly. You know, you have four minutes for speaking. The lights will be on, and then the white light comes on when you have one minute left before you're concluding. The red light comes on when you can finish. Mr. England.
All right. So Mayor, Mayor-elect, Council, thank you for having me. So recently, our company was out at Prairie Fire over in Overland Park. Our web development firm had their 10-year anniversary out there. It was an absolutely great time, and I had heard about the Prairie Fire development, which is kind of all the rage, and was interested to see what that was like. It was absolutely gorgeous. It's sort of the crown jewel of Overland Park right now and is, strangely enough, similar to design that the proposal that we have here. It creates an experience. It's a nice mixed-use facility. And really, I sat there and I thought about it. I talked to the owner of Lifted Logic and some of these other pieces, and bringing all of, everybody in, it was almost a recruitment tool because it said, "This is part of our community. This is something that we have access to. You want to be a part of that." And Overland Park has done a great job with Prairie Fire, and I think that it's important here for three reasons. It helps prove the effectiveness of the mixed-use model. It's done incredibly well, and I think that the designs here that we have are incredibly interesting. Second, it sort of proves the effectiveness of the different tax vehicles as a medium for change in a town in order to make that better. And I'll dive a little bit deeper into that here, but also just gauging the room and the conversations that we've been a part of, this is something that Topeka's truly interested in. So first off, just this mixed-use is really an interesting proposal for quality of life, and that's our biggest concern. We've been hammering on this. There are a lot of different things which we could choose to bring to Topeka, but one of the biggest concerns, and you know, we saw this in the International Economic Development Organization, like they did research here recently, and overwhelmingly showed that people choose a town to move to first because of the quality of life, and then they find a job in that space second. So this is something which is really resonating with us. And if you look just across the nation, as far as quality of life goes, Overland Park has really struck a chord. So you go to livability.com, and here in 2017, they aggregate all sorts of data perspectives as to how people feel. Overland Park is ranked ninth in the entire United States, so clearly whatever it is that they're doing seems to be striking a chord. And that excites me when I look at Morgan Chilson's article in The Journal from July 19th, when it reads, "Peterson tackles the complex issues of financing the project. Swart and tenants have committed to the development but focused on creating a new community that puts Topeka ahead of anywhere else in Kansas. I think the neat thing here is that Jim and his group are way ahead of the curve where the vision is going, a lot of these developments," says Matt Pennington, president of Drake Development in Overland Park. "They don't exist yet. To see Topeka get one of these firsts really ahead of Kansas City is a testament to Jim and the rest of the people who are here." So, you know, we're really on to something. The second has to do more or less with the tax vehicles, and I mentioned this last time, Mastery, Power and Light, maybe these weren't the most effective vehicles, but they became these anchor points, which I speak of, and where people are incredibly interested and will come from outside communities to be a part of that. So Prairie Fire was funded by sales tax rate bonds, Star Bonds, and a 1.5 cent CID, similar package, and has been absolutely worth the investment. So we sit there and we see what OP has done, and it makes me think of that Newton quote, right? "If I have seen further than those before us, it's on the shoulders of giants." We've seen what's capable in Kansas, and we have a similar package here. And I think, you know, you look behind me, and we've got some 40-some-odd young professionals here that are in favor of the development. It struck a chord, and I think we truly have an opportunity here. So, you know, Forge is incredibly interested. We stand in affirmation, and we are excited to see the way the vote goes. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Bob Ross, to be followed by Clint Paddy.
Thank you. I am excited to be here because this is the kind of thing I love that Topeka is actually actively pursuing. I do represent part of Forge. I do their recreation and entertainment. I also help to do the co-chair for the Top City Intern Program, and I work at Payless Shoe Source as a manager of allocation and planning. And especially having worked at Payless and grown up in this city, I've watched as Topeka has allowed its brand to be defined by people outside of Topeka. And everyone always loves, especially if you grew up here, everyone loves to tell you where you live. They love to tell you what it's like to be there. And, you know, back in 2010, Kiplinger put together an article and said that Topeka was going to be one of the top 10 places over the next decade. And people were excited, and a lot of people laughed. They're like, "Why would Topeka be one of the top 10 places?" But when you actually look at what this community, led by a lot of people on this board, have done over the last 10 years, it's a marvel. Because you're right, throughout the 80s and 90s, we were a little sleepy. We kind of rested on our laurels. You go back to the 60s, you see a confident, thriving city that believed in itself. And then somehow we lost our motivation, or we just kind of lost direction a little bit. And then really, what we've seen over the last 10 years is this city deciding to reinvest in itself. And we did it with downtown. We're doing it different corners of the community. And that's when, when I saw the Wheatfield development being proposed, I was like, "Yes." I'm like showing that to everybody in my work because I'm just like, "Take that. This is what's coming down the pipe. You think this is where we live? This is actually where I'm going to live." And that's why I'm excited to see what everyone is coming out for, is that these are people that are excited to be a part of this because we're actually going to be showing people the community that we're going to become. I have five kids. I want my kids to grow up here. I want my kids to live here. Right now, my son thinks the peak of civilization is a Cheesecake Factory and an Apple Store. That's all he wants in life. So he's like looking at Johnson County hard. And I'm like, "No." I was like, "I want you to stay here." And that's why, you know, I showed him, and I'm like, you know, seeing what he gets to see there, and I show him, you know, the hotel, and we actually walked along the now, the Shungert Trail Path that extends along there. And I see this community that it's going to become. And especially as I work with our interns, you know, right now, I have to do a lot of work casting the vision for them. We had 250 interns here last summer, and I have to tell them what's coming down the pipe. I have to tell them about the Cyrus Hotel. I have to tell them about the plaza that we're doing downtown. And I have to tell them about Wheatfield. What I'm looking forward to is that next year, they're going to see things actually happening. They're actually going to see that development take place. And yes, it may be an unconventional development, but at the same time, we're at an unconventional place in our life here in this community because developers are not knocking down the door to come here. We have to essentially be looking at the men and women that are actually willing to put their money and their heart where their mouth is and said, "Yeah, we're going to invest here." And I think it's important that as a community, we invest alongside them and say, "You're right. Right now, we're going to have to prime the pump. Right now, we're going to have to do something a little extra to get these things to happen so that we can show everyone that Topeka's open for business again." And I think as we begin to validate what's going on downtown, we begin to validate what happens at Wheatfield, then all of a sudden, other developers will start to see what we already see, why we love this place, why we love being here. It's because we will shop that development. We will go downtown to these places. We honestly, I get tired of always having to drive down to the Legends or drive to Kansas City or go to Master Street. I'm excited the fact that I can now start to do these things here. So I am excited that you guys are leading the way with this and that, at least as a community, we can be discussing this because this is an exciting development of where we're actually going to go. And it helps us focus on the Topeka that's going to exist for the next 25 years. So thank you all for what you do and for what you're leading and for maybe keeping my son here in like 10 years. So fingers crossed. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Clint Paddy, to be followed by Marge Arns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good evening. I just want to say how odd it is for me to be here and not advocating on somebody's behalf, but it is an absolute pleasure to be in front of you. I have missed you all in the last year. I am not with Forge. I skew slightly outside their demographic now. So you get to hear a little bit from the old guy now. I'm Clint Paddy. I am currently the Executive Vice President, General Counsel for Clayton Wealth Partners. It's a pleasure to be here today. I've been asked to talk a little bit about raising a young family. I'm not young, but my family's young. I have a 10-year-old and a seven-year-old. Topeka, I've been here for 22 years. That's hard to believe. I thought about that today. For the last 20 years, my wife and I have made Topeka our home. We've invested money in local businesses. We work here. We educate our children and have made the conscious choice to educate those children right inside the inner core of Topeka. We're very interested in what goes on here and very interested in the quality of life that we have here for our family and for future generations. There is a tendency in our community, I think, for people to wonder if there's one gigantic solution for quality of life, some huge project that will suddenly turn a switch one day and make us all proud to be from Topeka. I've come to the conclusion of the last 22 years that that does not exist, that there is no magic pill, and that I think it's important for us to be microambitious and to move towards goals that are attainable, and a lot of goals that are attainable. Hit one, be victorious. Hit the next, be victorious. And continuous victory in a community will lift it up, and I believe this to be one of those projects. We do very much, my wife and I are very much committed to this community because it is now our home, and it will be our home forever. And we want this to be the kind of place that is able to attract young tradespeople, young professionals. Those are the future, and they need to see Topeka as a destination and to concentrate on what we do have. And what we do have is a wonderful, supportive community that is truly a great place to raise a family. What we can lift it up to is a great regional destination where we can actually attract families to Topeka, who will look at it and say, "That is a place where I want to be." And that is done through projects like these. It's done through other projects that I'm sure will be brought to you through the years and have been brought to both you and the county commission that have been approved. These are the kind of microambitious projects that lift the community up. And wow, I'm actually going to finish ahead of time. None of you, I guarantee you would have believed that, that have been here through the years with me. I would just close by saying this. What the community needs more of is we need more festivals. We need more entertainment districts. We need to make sure we have the very best parks and recreation that anyone can have around. Those are the kind of items that young tradespeople and young professionals want to locate to, and those are all attainable goals. And I'm proud tonight to support this project for the community and hope that it will be favorably considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Marge Arns-
21 seconds left. I just want to point that out for the record.
You can't take them back. Marge Arns, to be followed by Krista Thacker.
I'm Marge Arns. I live at 1238 Southwest Mulvaney. I've been here 35 years. I looked around because I hadn't seen this wonderful crowd, and I've heard about this enthusiasm. enthusiasm. I have always focused on public policy. I'm speaking for myself tonight in that regard. And I struggle to figure out what exactly this all means to the entire community. I read the financial analyst's report last night, and frankly, I was alarmed to think that we will be committing, if it's completed, $18 million. We'll be giving up $18 million of public money to support, or what I consider a subsidy of business. And we've allowed for a period of 22 years, I think, correct me please, for it all to come together. Many of us will be, I will be gone-gone, and many of you will be gone in a different way because most people don't stay in the same job for even five years, any longer. So I hate to do this. It's not the kind of thing I like to do, but I don't like to read the financial analysis. I don't feel confident. And I haven't been involved in the chamber or in Forge. I certainly fight for Topeka at every front, but I'm in central Topeka, where I literally fight, where the guns go off, where crime has escalated to a high degree. I'm very worried about our relationships with each other among races and economic differences and school performance, especially because of the high rate of poverty in an area in which I live. So I would think, I would like that 18 or 19 million dollars to be dedicated towards those kinds of injustices. And I'm, and I'd like some of it available to the struggling businesses. A few months ago, an owner of a motel at another entrance to Topeka, not a very attractive one, a freeway entrance, told me that he pays $18,000 a year in property tax. And I checked that another motel on I-70 pays $282,000 a year in property tax. I don't even know, because I'm really not competent, about whether or not this development will pay property tax. And if it isn't, I don't know if that is computed in the 18, $19 million estimated to be given up to the city. So those are my concerns, and I'm not suggesting that you haven't thought of them as the responsible kind of people you are, but I want you to think of justice for the existing businesses and for the real heartache problems our city faces. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Krista Thacker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Krista Thacker, and I am the new Director of Talent Acquisition for Stormont Vale. And so I am brand-new to Topeka. I'm very excited to be here. And this is, this is a very important subject to me as a recruiter for a large health system. Starting off, I've been here not very long, and asking my colleagues, where do you live in Topeka? I live in Lawrence. I have been really surprised by that, disappointed by it too, because as a recruiter, I have 20 years of healthcare recruiting experience behind me. People stay in the communities that they live in, and employees leave if they don't stay in their own communities. They will find a job closer to their home, or they will leave to another job. That being said, professionals in hard-to-fill positions, and you've all heard about healthcare. There's all kinds of articles on how hard it is to find healthcare professionals. What they are looking for is a community because they do have opportunities for jobs in other towns. And they come in, and I have the pleasure of showing them my community and showing them what they can enjoy. And each one of them, whenever we're recruiting, they're looking for something specific, whether it's a young professional, whether it is someone with a Second Life family, grandchildren, or if they are single and they want to know what's going on in town. And being able to do that is really important because they're going to choose because it meets their lifestyle needs. Right now, in Topeka, we do not have this kind of neighborhood, and it does, and we can't meet a lot of candidates that are coming in their needs for an area like this. They're looking for a walkable, quality-of-life area where they can bicycle, where they can run with their strollers, they can walk over to a restaurant, they can go and have a beer with friends and walk home so that it's easy. They like things easy. They're professionals, and their time is very valuable. I have seen success both in Wichita and Tulsa. That's where I've spent the last 20 years. In both those communities, we have developed walking districts where we have apartments, condos. It's surrounded by lovely communities that are older homes. It has a restaurant. It has a pottery shop. It has a coffee shop. It has yoga. Yoga's very popular in Tulsa. And then they have events that bring in others from other areas. So these become areas where they've had to add parking because so many people are coming because, okay, tonight is going to be the charity event where we walk from restaurant to restaurant and have a taste. And they can bring their kids. I cannot tell you how many times I've seen strollers. It is important for us to have an area to retain and to recruit. We want people to stay here. Professionals want this kind of an area, and that's where I've been successful in recruiting and retaining over 125 physicians in Tulsa in the last year. They live in that community, three of them. I have an RN there, and I have two physical therapists there, as well as a number of other individuals from my health system. So I ask you to consider this tonight, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak, and I'm looking forward to living here in Topeka.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the people who signed up to speak. This is a public hearing, so if anyone else in the audience wishes to address this subject, you are welcome to do so. This is the time when anyone can come to the podium and speak. Seeing none, we declare the public hearing over. It is complete. Council, do you have any discussion or do you wish to take action? Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Deputy Mayor's moved to approve the ordinance. Councilman Delisa seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll address the elephant in the room here. I think this is a great project. I think we need more projects like that, like this one. And I agree with everything that's been said, but what I have a real issue with, and what my constituents have a real issue with, is the 471,833 backs on special assessments, the tax on that. And that's what I've heard. And no, maybe this LLC doesn't have that, but I've had a lot of, oh God, a lot of discussion with contractors. They're watching what we're going to do tonight. They're watching how we're going to handle that and how we're going to just say, okay, well, not on this LLC, but he still owns that. I've sat here and I've listened to people come forward and say, what's going to be in there? Maybe it's not going to be in there. There's been so much up and down. I'm not really sure what's going to be in there. I've seen the emails where I thought were very abrupt, where we've walked away, where we're not going to handle it anymore. I just think we could have been a better partner, and we could have done a better job at really, really putting all of this together. And with all that said, I just can't wholeheartedly support this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other discussion? Councilman Schwartz.
Well, I don't know if I'll have the last word, but my time is about to end here. So this is one of the projects that I think Topeka needs. But I emailed Freddie Mayon, and he did the research for GoToPika. I just want to read a few of those lines because I asked him to summarize the research, and we have gotten stacks of information on this. Ladies and gentlemen, I conclude that the Wheatfield Village project would provide a positive economic impact of approximately $141 million related to the construction of the village in the first year. This type of impact would occur only once. Building this type of structure would support close to 1,000 jobs, half coming from construction and the other half from businesses supporting the construction of the village. Operating the village has the potential to generate a net positive economic impact of more than $20 million in output every year if each proposed business operates at efficient levels. The Wheatfields Village is expected to generate 150 new jobs. It would provide additional services currently not found in the city. It would increase supply in the market, thus increasing competition and possibly reducing prices for certain goods and services. It would increase infrastructure investment by the city that's providing positive externalities to citizens in terms of more efficient roads. It will renovate and outdated part of the city. It has a potential positively, to positively impact the quality of life of many local citizens as well as serve as a stepping stone to bring more talent to the city. I wholeheartedly support this project, and I hope we can move forward and make Topeka the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? We have a motion and a second. Councilman Emerson.
I was just going to say, this is the type of project that my company would normally be involved in, so I was planning to abstain. However, I think my vote may be needed, so therefore, my company will abstain from doing any work on this project, so that I can vote.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have seven yes. Councilmembers clear, and Ortiz voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. So that is a major step. We now go to item G, ordinance, another ordinance relating to Wheatfield Village.
G is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at the northwest corner of Southwest 29th Street and Southwest Fairlon Road in the city of Topeka, Kansas, from C4 Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development District, C4 and M3 use groups.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I'd ask Plan Director Bill Fander to come forward and discuss the PUD, please.
Now, this is the item from the planning, recommendation from the Planning Commission on zoning.
That is correct, Your Honor. We did build this probably last month, but let me go over it and refresh your memory as to what came forth from the Plan Commission. You heard much of the details of the project, which syncs up with what the Plan Commission heard. There are two phases of land uses for the development. The reason that the zoning has to take place is because not, although most of the uses comply with the C4's commercial zoning that's on there now, the residential portion, as well as some setback and parking variances are necessary through the PUD to make this mixed-use project work. So what came back out of the Plan Commission was a recommendation of approval for that two-phased approach. Some of the elements that they had to consider, it forwarded to you in the recommendations, included, as I said, some parking variance at a mixed-use rate to make those work on site. The signage package will be similar to what you would see on some of the newer development on Wadimakers such as the Academy and Old Chicago. Extensive landscaping, including a berm, landscape berm along Fairlon. Traffic, there was a traffic impact study done. A lot of the issues that we tried to work through revolved around traffic. The traffic study was approved by the city. It was developed by the applicant. The main recommendations out of that, there would be, in order to do a phase, in order to occupy Phase One development, improvements to Southwest Fairlon would have to be completed. If those, once those are complete, then Phase One could be occupied, and likewise, Phase Two could be occupied once improvements to Southwest 29th are completed. I will note that the PUD does show three access points into the site, two along Fairlon and one off of I-470 On Ram. The one off of I-470 On Ram required a break-in access approval from KDOT, which that was not received. So the PUD would require a slight administrative amendment to show that. But that being said, it is approved from both ways. We're without the break-in access, so we can move forward. That in of itself also created a need for pedestrian and bike access, as was mentioned, along the Shunga Trail. Some of that will need to be replaced as a fire lane. That was part of the PUD, but that will be at the request or the requirement of the developer. So sum total, we have a recommendation of approval for the project. The zoning that has come before you was unanimously recommended, so I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Fander on the PUD on the zoning? Seeing none, thank you very much. Your pleasure. Councilman Delisa moves to approve. Councilman Hiller, seconds. Then we will have ex parte, which I assume probably everyone has some, something to share. We'll start, and probably just go around. Councilman Hiller.
I don't recall anything that was specific to me.
On this, on the PUD?
Yeah.
Okay. Clear?
I don't think specifically.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yeah.
Okay.
Emails and phone calls, yes.
You had information. Councilman Emerson.
Emails and phone calls, no sign. Yes. I've received numerous emails and phone calls about all aspects of this issue.
All right. Yes, and for myself. And we have, we say, in spite of that, we can make a clear decision based on the information that we have received and have a clear judicial response and support or denial of the recommendation of Planning Commission. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have seven yes. Councilmembers clear, and Ortiz voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the PUD for the Wheatfield Village project is approved. Go to item H, another final ordinance, CID.
H is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, establishing a community improvement district for the Wheatfield Village district at 29th and Southwest Fairlon Road and leaving a CID sales tax of 2% within the CID.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, governing body, I have nothing further to add. I think we've covered most of the items related to this in the earlier comments.
Any other, any questions? Discussion? Your pleasure. Councilman Schwartz moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Cohen, seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have seven yes. Councilmembers clear, and Ortiz voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. That completes the action items for this evening. We go then to non-action items, but I think there will be some people who won't want to say, although the discussion is on the downtown parking. We will take a 10-minute break.